Okay, I do hereby call this May City Council meeting to order and ask for a roll.
Councilmember Kevin Reed.
Present.
Councilmember Alex McCree.
Here.
President Jennifer Harrington.
Here.
Mayor Pat Stivers.
Here.
Councilmember Dr. David Gwann.
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
Great, thank you. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? At this time, I would entertain an approval of the agenda. Any changes from staff?
No changes at this time.
Any comments or changes from council if I would entertain a motion?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
And a motion is second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Alex. Opposed, same sign. Agenda has been approved. We're going to move on to item number five, which is a public hearing for the GO bonds. I know some of you are here from that. I talked to a couple of you already. What I'd like to do at this time, and I'd like to have Larry, if you could just kind of come up and give a general idea of what this is all about, so maybe folks can understand them a little bit better. And then if anybody wants to talk after that, they're more than welcome to.
Yeah, I'm Larry Kleeman, the Director of Strategic Advisory Advisor. All right. As we discussed last month, the city has completed various improvements, street, water, sewer, and so forth, improvements that benefit various property owners, mainly residential, and we're preparing to permanently bond that, those expenses, over a period of 20 years. And before we do that, state law requires the city to send out a notice to affected property owners, notifying them of the proposed special assessments and notifying them of this hearing tonight. So this is a hearing for any property owner that wants to speak to the matter. After you then close the hearing, there will be a special assessment ordinance further down on your agenda to officially levy the assessments. And then we will send out on behalf of the city a second notice. And property owners will have 30 days that they can prepay if they choose to. Most don't. And then after that, the assessments will be levied on the property owners for over 20 years, after we sell the bonds and know the interest rate and such. Have to answer any questions now or later on.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time with regard to the GO bonds? You know, if you're interested in speaking to Larry after we move on from this, you're more than welcome to. He's here. I'd be happy to talk to you. Any questions you may have. I know he spent a little time with you guys already. So not hearing anybody else, I would close the GO bond special assessment at this time. And I would move on to item number six, which is public comments. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments? No? Okay. Item number seven is the consent agenda.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And a motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, business. Item A is a special assessment ordinance series. These are the 2025 GO bonds that we just kind of discussed. Somebody from staff want to talk to that?
Public hearing and special assessment ordinance, series 2025A. Larry just kind of came up here and spoke a lot of what I was going to talk about today. But I'm going to go ahead and mention the projects that we did and what's involved in it. So on May 19th, the governing body approved documents initiating a special assessments process for the various improvements. The COGS additions, paving. Villas at Hampton Lakes, paving, sewer, water, and drainage. Watered addition phase three, paving, water. Cypress Point second addition, paving, sewer, stone water, drainage, and water. 119th sewer main for Arveda and Fox Creek. The governing body also established June 16, 2025, at 6:00 PM as a public hearing date and time to hear any written or oral objections to this assessment. Larry is here to answer any questions. I would like to also add that property owners may prepay their assessments within 30 days. If not, the balance will be bonded and special assessments will be collected in 20 annual installments. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from council? Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Just a second, I gotta find it.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the ordinance authorizing the levying and collection of special assessments.
I will second it.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance authorizing the leveling and collection of specialist assessments, series 2025A GO bonds. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item B is a sale resolution for the GO bonds 2025A.
I'm going to stay here and talk to you about this as well. The governing body has gone through the process of preparing the special assessments for the infrastructures that I just listed for special assessments and as, as well as our city at large projects, which is Academy Avenue, our water line for 53rd to Tyler and 119. Bond proceeds will be used to redeem portions of the city's outstanding 2022B and 2023A temporary note that provide interim financing for these projects. The special assessments that are levied are intended to intended to provide most of the debt services on the bond. To the extent special assessments are not paid, the bond will continue to be a general obligation of the city. City at large projects will be the general obligation of the city. Funds have been included in the bond issue to apply for the bond rating for S and P. This bond total is going to be $14,560,000, an estimated amount. Bids are due by 11:00 AM on August 4th and called on October 1st of 2032. And if there's any additional questions, again, Larry's here.
Any questions from council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the sales resolution of the 2025GO, uh, 2025A GO bonds.
I have a motion and a second to approve the sale resolution for the 2025A GO bonds. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number C is Stone Ridge Development Plan requesting petition and resolution of advisability. This is a continuation from our June 2nd meeting.
As you just pointed out, we met two weeks ago and you were asked to consider a special assessment, approving a special assessment petition for Stone Ridge Addition to Mays. They, as you maybe remember, they currently have an unpaved road and they have interest in paving that road. At the June 2nd meeting, we had several individuals that were not part of the original petition that felt they should go revisit the topic of how specials would be spread. I helped facilitate a meeting that next week on a Monday and we talked through different options. We listed what the cost breakdowns were if we were to go a different route. And ultimately, they agreed as a group to vote and they ultimately decided to keep it as it currently was. So the specials would be spread evenly over each parcel with seven individuals that would benefit from it. I will say it wasn't a unanimous vote, but I think it became pretty clear that the group, that was the, that was what the group had. And we laid out, they laid out a lot of ground rules that, you know, this wasn't about not going forward with it, but it was a chance to talk about different opportunities on how you can spread those specials. And so though they talked about them, they ultimately voted to keep it as it was. So the petition and the resolution of advisability that you received two weeks ago would be the same one we would move forward with. I will point out that there is that 53,000 that could be assessed to the property of the South in the event that is annexed and comes into the city. And so that piece is kind of unique with this. You remember, we passed that ordinance last week that allowed us to do that. That gave us home rule authority to go forward with that. So with that, we'd make the recommendation from staff standpoint, and we moved forward with this. And we began the process to work with the design engineer to get this done and start that process going.
What sort of a timeframe are we looking at on this to complete the project from start to finish?
I think, you know, one of the things that they brought up is they want to keep it as affordable as possible. So that might be tied a little bit to how we bid this project. We may build some flexibility into the timing of it. Because if you have that flexibility, I think you're going to get better bids. So there's not much design that goes into this. It's basically five inches of base layer and five inches of asphalt. So obviously, getting it in before any asphalt plants close will be important. But I kind of wanted to wait and make sure this was going to get approved before we go into those details. But we try to get it done as quick as we can, but also build some flexibility. And so we make sure we get the best prices available because that was pretty important to the neighborhood.
Yeah, if you put this in with another project that was going on and that would eliminate the setup fee and all that other stuff would help, I would think.
I don't know. You know, it's something we can visit, but.
Kind of depends on who the bidders are. Okay. Any questions?
No. Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I would move to accept the petition for paving improvements to Stone Ridge Estate, addition in the total amount of $253,000. And number two, to adopt the resolution of advisability for Stone Ridge Estates addition paving improvements.
Well, second.
A motion is second to accept the petition for paving improvements to Stone Ridge Estates addition in the total amount of $253,000. And number two, to a motion to adopt the resolution of advisability for Stone Ridge Estates addition paving improvements. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, City of Mays strategic plan.
Good evening, Mayor. Council Kathy Sexton, with the Public Policy Management Center at WSU. As you all know, we have been working for a few months here figuring out your strategic plan. We did surveys, we did focus groups, we did lots of work with workshops with you all to, yeah, Dave, go right ahead. Yep, that's right. Got it. Yep. And so tonight, I just want to present the overview. You do have some documents in your agenda packet. And I will call your attention to the first one, which is the actual 10-page strategic plan document. So, so in terms of how did we get here? It was several months of stakeholder engagement, both you all, your staff, your several boards, and members of the community, business community, school community, et cetera. We came up with a visionary tagline is what we're calling it, and that is "Together We Thrive." You all have been using a three-word tagline for many years and decided in the last workshop in April that it would be advisable to update that and to use something that is bringing the community together and also reflective of the city's growth pattern and future. So the mission itself, though, is provided here as well. And I think it's really a situation where you didn't really have much of a mission statement prior. So this one is worth every word in terms of, not too lengthy to be difficult, but nicely descriptive. The mission of the City of Mays is to create a thriving, family-friendly community that supports businesses, encourages responsible growth, and provides quality services to enhance the well-being of residents. So you have it all in there, right? You have your businesses, your responsible growth, and your quality service, three main things. And the idea of putting in your mission that you are and want to be a family-friendly, thriving community is certainly a goalpost that everyone can rally around and use the mission statement in that way. As you know, and in your document there, you also have core values, five to be exact. And in your strategic plan document on page six, we get into those five with a statement for each one that says more about it. So intentionality and in growth. So intentionality and growth and development, because obviously, as a thriving suburb, you are growing. But intentionality is the, is the, is the desire here. And that is that you're making sure that you pick the, pick the things that really have the most impact for your community and work responsibly within responsible budget management. So not only do you want the high-quality services and housing and amenities, but that you are mindful of financial constraints and with that ever, that eye ever on the goal of reducing the need for property taxes. Strong community connections is one of the core values. And that commitment is to cooperate with community organizations, residents, and businesses to grow the community in ways that build on each other's strengths. The idea is that we are better together. When you're in a community like Mays, when you have several organizations, whether it be schools, businesses, et cetera, it's very important that everyone work together and create those strong community connections. So seeing that as a core value is certainly commendable. Professional development of the workforce, not only city employees, but also the students and residents in Mays, recognizing that the jobs that exist for the students you have in your schools now, the jobs that will be there when they get out of school probably don't even exist today. So that takes a real community effort to prepare residents and those students for the future jobs so that your business community and your economy is thriving. Did I go over them all? I think I might have. There you go. Five new core values. I commend you for those because I've seen organizations have lists longer than that, where you get to where you're having eight or more and/or sort of routine things that everybody wants. You know, like integrity. Well, yeah, who doesn't want to have integrity, right? So these ones, I think, are specific enough to really provide guidance, both to your management as well as your staff, as well as you as a governing body. Jumping in then into the plan itself, we have seven goals. And each of those goals has various strategies associated with it. And starting with goal one is to strengthen the community identity and connections. So strengthening the identity and connections has four strategies under it. What I thought I would do is just real briefly go through each of those and pause after each one in case there's anything in there that any of you all want to discuss, question, et cetera. The intent of the, of this goals and strategies that are in your document is then the staff would be able to make action plans with timelines and champions and it person, so to speak, on each one. And that will take additional time. But this document is that guiding document that will, that would be available on the website here in a few weeks, assuming you approve it tonight, and, and that would guide. Obviously, you don't want your staff to go to all that work if y'all make any changes to this tonight, so, or thereafter. So goal one has four strategies at this point. Enhance parks and public spaces with new features. Expand traditional community events and encourage new ones. Three, plan for future community facility space needs and develop and promote a consistent community brand and visual identity. So there's a lot there in each of those four, even though it may sound clear, there's all kinds of things. More and better events, facility, space needs, brand and identity. That's a lot of work. So it's a good thing in terms of your community has grown so much. What a lot of people in the larger community think of as Mays is not today's Mays, right? It there's, it's very different. If you haven't been here in the last five years, you probably haven't been here, kind of a deal. I mean, it's changed a lot. Any questions, thoughts, discussion on any of those four strategies under the goal to strengthen community identity? The second goal is to support business and industry growth to expand the tax base. So the why of this goal is to expand the tax base. It's important that your tax base is expanding so you can provide services. It's not like you're an older city that has a bunch of services and you're just maintaining them. As a, as a new and growing and vibrant community, you're creating new services and filling needs kind of as you go along. So the five strategies identified under this goal to support business and industry are to update the comprehensive plan with a forward-looking land use map. So very important updates and routine updates to comp plan when you're growing as fast as Mays is and has been. B, strategy B, advance amenities and improvements in the Academy Arts District. You started a really good thing there, and I think what I heard and what we tried to translate into this strategy is that we need to do more in Academy Arts District and not, not stop with the beginnings of it, but continue to improve that. C, promote family-friendly entertainment venues. D, encourage business involvement in the Chamber of Commerce. And E, advocate for a final decision and a construction timeline for the Northwest Expressway. Obviously, Mays cannot make that big old highway happen by yourself, but, and obviously, you wish it would happen, right? But I think this one is, is worded to say, you know what? How many more decades do we go through of this indecision? We all know the worst thing in business is indecision by regulatory and governmental agencies. And so not knowing whether that land that's sitting there and has been for a couple decades is going to sit there for a couple decades more or actually have a road on it is worse than, than knowing. So your, your strategy here is advocate for a final decision and a construction timeline for the Northwest Expressway. Any discussion or questions on those ones? So goal three area is to invest in street sidewalks and pedestrian mobility. So you have four strategies in this regard, and the first one is your existing streets and sidewalk infrastructure. Using best practice, you would, best practices, you would maintain and upgrade your existing street and sidewalk infrastructure. B is plan improvements to pedestrian access and traffic flow along 119th Street from 29th to 45th. Now, did you hear me say plan improvements? Because this is a strategic plan for three years. And you might say, why, if it's so strategic, why isn't it 10 years? Well, let me tell you what. 20 years ago, that maybe 30, back in the 90s, everyone was doing 10-year plans or longer. In this day and age, I think we've all figured out that plans created back then never actually got implemented past the first few years. They usually got shelved, certainly got dust collected on them. What we really like to do is encourage organizations like yourselves, which is a very fast-growing, fast-moving organization, to focus on the first three years. Because if you can't get it done. it done in the next couple of years, then it's not a priority. You know what I mean? You can only get so many things done, and that's why the process of narrowing is important and the process of saying, okay, on these major street projects, these take, once you even get funding. If you had funding for major street projects, they would still take at least three years to actually design and bid and implement and get it built. So getting funding, of course, takes years as well, especially when you're trying to get federal and state and county funding involved in things. So your second strategy there is 119th Street from 29th to 45th. And C, plan enhancements for traffic and pedestrian flow along 45th and Tyler Corridor. Both big areas, both expensive, so the goal for the first three years is to plan. Planning means, what are you going to do? How are you going to do it? And how's it going to get funded? And that's a lot of work, to be real honest. D, and the final action plan for these strategies, or the final strategy, is update prioritized projects within the Mays-in-Motion Sidewalk Master Plan. I love that you have a cool name on your Sidewalk Master Plan. I've never seen that. I've always had a Sidewalk Master Plan, very boring. Yours, Mays-in-Motion. That's great that you have a plan, and your strategy here is to update and prioritize the projects, because making the plan is one thing and implementing it is a whole nother thing. So some good goal there. Any comments or thoughts in this area of infrastructure? Well, Goal Four is all about promoting responsible growth that is aligned with financial sustainability. So as you all know from having lived in Mays for a while, growth is one thing. Sustainability and responsible financial management are a whole different thing, but they're both very hard. So four strategies. Support and guide new development projects that align with the financial capabilities of the city. Encourage a mix of housing options serving diverse income levels and age groups. This is hard in a community, especially when people have already moved here, you know, invested their life savings in these nice homes, and their neighbors have nice homes. It can be very difficult to bring in additional types of housing to meet all kinds of income needs and levels, but it's necessary, and I commend you if you put this in your plan, because it's discouraging to have a community, a community, a city where your teachers can't afford to live, or where your police officers and your firefighters and, you know, people who are salt-of-the-earth working folks, if they can't live there, then it makes for a whole different deal in terms of a community that regular folks have to drive into for their jobs. So encouraging that mix of housing options is the second strategy for Goal Four. The third one is attract retail businesses that generate sales tax revenue. And D is conduct a comprehensive master utility planning that ensures financially, excuse me, fiscally responsible investment in reliable water, wastewater, storm sewer, road, and sidewalk infrastructure. So when it comes to all these core functions of city government, which is make sure the water coming out the tap comes out, right? Make sure the wastewater goes away when we flush. These are all important things, and we all found that out last week, I think, with our storm sewers, right? When it's raining hard, those storm sewers better be not only built, but not clogged up and working, right? So these are core functions of government, but worthy of a strategy in your plan because costs are constantly rising, regulations continue to go. And if you're keeping the same, you know, utility rates, for example, that you had a few years ago, I mean, I know raising them is hard, but if you have the same rates, there's a good chance you're not keeping up with either your growth projections or with your needs for meeting various regulatory requirements and such. So those are the strategies proposed for Goal Four. And Goal Five, diversify revenue sources to reduce dependence on property tax. Now, what does this not say? It does not say any kind of a mandate that we're going to lower property taxes or the mill levy. What it says is, in order to reduce the dependence on that major revenue stream that is allowed by state laws for cities to have property taxes, one of the few revenue streams cities are allowed to have, in order to reduce dependence on it, you have to have diversification of your revenue sources. So A, update and implement a modern financial policies. I know you're working on that. This is very important. Things have changed a lot over the years. B, pursue grants, donations, and alternative funding opportunities. Sometimes there are available opportunities. Those all take not only time to apply for, but a lot of patience, because sometimes you have to apply for a couple of years in a row to get them. And C, evaluate and implement sales tax initiatives aligned with community needs. D, review and adjust utility rate structures to reflect rising service cost. E, analyze the feasibility of implementing a stormwater utility fee and use long-term financial planning to manage debt, tax abatements, and capital investments responsibly. So as city council members, of governing body members over the years, you know, every year you do a budget, and you spend some serious time and energy working on that budget, and every year there's an audit and a comprehensive financial report for that year. Well, this strategy on Goal Five suggests that's not enough. What you need to be doing as a community is paying attention to your debt levels, when those are to be paid off, and how that affects not just this year's budget, but long-term, paying attention to tax abatements that you have granted, especially in your industrial park, to knowing when those properties come back on the tax rolls, and so that you can plan your capital improvements around those years, and also that you would manage capital investments responsibly. So a lot there in Goal Five to diversify revenue sources. There's a lot of heavy lifting for a three-year period, but those kinds of tools can help you reduce your dependence on property tax. Any conversation about those strategies on Goal Five? I know the photo makes it look like we're going to have a rummage sale and like make a diversification, so sorry, we couldn't think of any other photo for that one, but I thought it was kind of funny. So have a garage sale.
Very diverse.
Why not? So Goal Six, ensure a safe, secure, and well-served community. We have five strategies under this one. Maintain police staffing levels and training standards. Monitor and adjust traffic flows and speed limits to improve safety. Three, ensure the SROs meet or exceed the training standards of the industry. D, communicate clearly with residents regarding local crime trends and public safety initiatives. And E, leverage technology to enhance public safety. Lot of things going on in policing and safety these days. It is not the same-old, same-old when it comes to policing. So applaud you for putting in the technology and the training, because getting and keeping police officers is a whole different ball of wax now than it was even just 10 years ago, to be honest, so. And then Goal Seven, we have to attract, develop, and retain high-quality employees and volunteers. So we have five strategies on this one, and then I'm going to stop talking, right? So A is to provide training and professional development aligned with individual roles and career goals to support growth and empowerment. B, conduct regular staffing and workload assessments to ensure departments can meet service demands and grow responsibly. C, benchmark and adjust compensation benefits and perks to remain competitive and retain institutional knowledge. Huge, huge. Some people say, well, somebody quits, we'll hire somebody else. Well, it's not that easy anymore. Used to be that was a good solution. Not so easy with the labor market we're in, but even more difficult when you think about institutional knowledge. That's huge, and you don't want that walking out the door. And D, invest in wellness, engagement, and recognition initiatives to promote satisfaction, loyalty, and long-term commitment. Gone are the days when we hire public employees and promise them a great pension and then say, okay, stay with us your whole career. We all know that things have changed, and so we need to prepare for people to give us a good five years and hope they'll stay longer and provide the amenities and the satisfaction and loyalty to keep people here, but knowing that many people will not be at the city their entire career. So we have to change the way we're doing things there. And the last one, improve efficiency and reduce manual workload through smart technology and process improvements. Lot of initiatives can be done at the city level when it comes to automation and using AI, for example, but it takes time and energy to redo processes and update procedures, and that is certainly a worthy strategy for your strategic plan. Applaud you for that. I think your staff has worked hard on this. You all have worked hard. This is but a brief summation, but again, the next steps on this would be for each of those strategies that I went through really quickly tonight to have action plans below them. So each one is specific things to do in 2026 and 2027, 2028. That would be implementing those strategies, breaking them down into its components, parts, assigning champions and timelines for when things would get done, and then also a reporting format and frequency that I know you all discussed in your workshop. I'm not sure if that's been decided on exactly, if that's going to be a monthly report, quarterly report, whatever, but those are the things to be figured out next in terms of implementing this plan. Any questions or comments? I'd be happy to try to address.
My only comment is to say thank you. I know as a team, we've done a tremendous amount of work on this, and I think it is very well thought out overall. It's my personal opinion. I'm excited to move forward with this.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. It was a joy working with you all as well as your staff.
I'm glad we talked to you guys, because we made the right choice.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I'll pass that along to the team. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I would move that we approved the strategic plan as presented.
A second. I got a motion and second to approve the May strategic plan as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Item E, City of Mays' Reserve Fund Policy. Hello again.
All righty, well, good evening again. Oops, some stuff around here. Okay, so Reserve Fund Policy. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the Reserve Fund Policy, and basically at the end, if you guys like it, I'm going to ask you to approve and adopt it. Why a Reserve Fund Policy? The objective of the policy is to ensure financial stability and protect against a wide range of risk. GFOA recommends that you have two months of reserves of your operating fund. The City of Mays faces potential threats such as revenue shortfalls during economic downturns, unexpected costs resulting from extreme events such as tornadoes. Maintain adequate reserves ensures that the city can respond promptly and effectively while continuing to provide essential services. What does this entail? So basically, what this entails is our general fund will maintain a 25% reserve. Our debt service fund will retain a 20% reserve, and wastewater reserve and water reserve will maintain a 15% reserve. I would like to note that this is something we're actually already doing. We have these reserves. There's no financial change in what we are doing. We are just adding a policy to what we already doing. We do keep reserves right now in our general fund and debt services. We will be moving some of those to wastewater reserve and water reserve. Done a lot of research. I've looked at a lot of different reserve fund policies. A lot of different areas have them here within Kansas, and almost everybody has them in wastewater and water reserves, kind of for, if you think about it, any kind of thing that happens that comes up in wastewater or water, drain breaks, or, I'm not the expert in those things, but I know that we will have high projects that could come up. I will also like to note that in order to use these funds, we have to have council approval. So these funds cannot be touched unless we have your approval or bring it to you. Every year, this number will be presented to you at our budget workshop. I would like to note, too, that we were going to use the budgeted number, so on our cash reserve budgeted expenditures for our proposed coming year rather than our previous actuals. Again, I did a lot of research, and I feel like that's going to give us the best, most accurate number for what we will need in that cash reserve or anything that might come up in that year. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Just a comment. What you said is, we're already doing this, now we're just going to put it in writing, basically. That's really what this is all about. Thank you.
Just some clarification questions. So for both general fund and debt service, so that 25% and 20% apply to the total budget authority?
So the total, so what it's going to propose, it's going to be proposed budget authority minus what we're putting in cash reserves, because I want to make much sense to have cash reserved in the line, use that. So for example, our total budget authority for this year is $8 million. Not exact, to be clear here, and that's just an estimate. That includes that cash reserve line. So to get that 25%, I'm taking out that cash reserve line and multiplying our budget authority by 0.25. I did also forget to mention, this makes our overall budget of two months of expenses. So it's not just two months in the general fund, it's two months in our overall budget. So that 25% plus 20 plus 15 plus 15 gives us the two months of operating funds.
Yeah, no, I'm saying this, the general fund debt service is the percentage of the total budget, but the water, yeah, it's the wastewater and water reserve, that percentage just apply to that particular fund, right?
Yes, correct. That's why they have different, so 15% for wastewater, 15% for water. I would like to also mention that our wastewater reserved, it's 15% based off our wastewater budget, is going to be in our wastewater reserve. So in our budget form lines, I don't know if you guys remember, but we have water, and then we have water reserve, we have wastewater, and then wastewater reserve. So it doesn't make sense to really keep that cash line in water when we have a reserve fund for it. But to get the most accurate number, we do need to use those expenditure numbers from our water budget, our water budget rather than our water reserve budget.
And all those reserves also allow us, because now, just thinking, if we get the sales tax class, maybe we sometime will have the revenue shortfall, given our focus won't be that accurate, and also the fluctuation of the sales tax, will this reserve also save, kind of serve the purpose of the Renadee Fund? Or any portion of that can do that?
So I think if I'm understanding your question correctly, so this policy actually allows us to make adjustments to it if we need to, if things like that happen, but these numbers would be set in stone percentage-wise. So if we were getting a larger number of revenues in our general fund and Fund One, so that percentage would fluctuate, that number would fluctuate to match the percentage. So that number could go up or that number could go down based on our budget authority or what we think. So this is based off of expenditures rather than revenue.
Yes, but, because I think there's some kind of language saying that this can be only used for the one-time money, but not the recurring, but just considering the cyclical cycle, if we have to have the revenue shortfall, does that need the council's approval, they need to send that reserve to, you know, kind of compensate that shortfall?
I misunderstood your question, I apologize. This does not come into play there. This is really just to keep our, this really is for one-time needs, any kind of emergency that we may have. So even with revenue shuffle, it would still need to be a one-time occurring event. Now, that's very loose language, right? We have one-time occurring events that happen quite often. So just kind of keep that in mind, but you are correct, we would not be able to shuffle those around unless I came to you guys and said, hey, I need to fix this policy. I'm going to come up with a long-term plan, which if you see replenishment of funds, it kind of gives me the opportunity to have a long-term plan to bring to you to adjust this as we need. I think it is important to have these funds just in reserves and really not touch them other than it is one-time occurring, because like I said, any natural disaster could happen here, anything, any awful event could happen. And just like our own individual budgets, it's really important to have.
I totally agree on that, but just thinking about the economic cycle, especially when we introduce sales tax, then we are subject to more volatile situation than we're just, I mean, there's a trade-off, thinking about relying on the property tax. Now, we do have another stream of revenue which tend to fluctuate, and so probably we need to think about maybe under one of the general fund reserve, they have an account named as the Renadee Fund, or Renadee Account, so that allow us to do those things. That's the purpose of asking this question.
I do want to reiterate, these are based on our proposed year expenditures. So obviously, if we don't have the revenue source, we are not going to have as high of a cash reserve line expenditure. So that's kind of how we are fluctuating. So that's kind of how we are fluctuating between those revenue costs, right? We get our assessments, we kind of go through budget form time, we estimate what we want each budget line, and then from our assessed revenue is how we go. I understand what you're saying, that we don't know exactly what we're going to get from sales tax because we're not there yet. But we have been able to estimate what we believe one year of sales tax is going to provide to us. And that's why I purposely use the proposed budget line, because it really gave us what we thought our next year was going to be rather than our previous revenue sources.
Those percentage is the maximum, right?
No, you could go higher.
Oh.
I just, GFOA recommended the two, two months, so that's what I did.
So it's the minimum, okay. Maximum.
Any other questions? Thank you. Let entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the adoption of the City of Mays Reserve Fund Policy.
I have a motion and second to approve the adoption of the City of Mays Reserve Fund Policy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, Addison Woods Addition Petitions and Resolutions.
Good evening, Council.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, guys.
So back on January 20th, the council approved the final plat for Addis Woods. That'll be on the southeast corner of 45th and Tyler. This addition is going to bring 47 new single-family residential lots on about a 30.32 acre area. Estimated sales price of the houses going in will be around $550,000 each when the homes are completed. Baughman Company has submitted the following petitions on behalf of the developer, HS5 LLC. Paving improvements, the amount of $1,900,000. Water improvements, the amount of $611,000. Sanitary sewer, the amount of $632,000. And stormwater drain, the amount of $1,212,000. In addition, sanitary sewer petition makes provisions for paying connections to the wastewater mains already constructed and owned by the City of Mays, paying required improvement cost in the amount of $77,140. This project will be included in the 2025 Project Funding Plan. We do expect to have to do another temp note late this year because we have a couple other projects in the pipeline. Bond Council's reviewed the petitions and prepared the attached resolutions. And with that, I'll seek recommendations.
Is the sewer line going to stay, what, south of 45th and go into the road?
They will connect, I believe that one's already on that side of Rose.
It'll be a crossing. It'll be a crossing under 45th Street. In existing sewer alignment runs north, south, down Tyler Road.
Okay, so it'll be east of Tyler Road.
Correct. Yes, from my understanding, east of Tyler Road. Why do I have to come from the north?
We don't think there will be the issue with the water with.
The waters.
Because across at Emerald.
It was north of Emerald.
Sorry about de-watering.
The Cove.
The de-watering, yeah.
Yeah, so they are taking that into account, and the plat, they've got pretty big sized lake they're putting in as well.
I think their elevation's a little bit higher too, maybe on that side of the road. So maybe we're not as worried.
They're taking that.
They're going to put a lake in there?
They are going to put a lake in the neighborhood. The plat is actually, I believe, the last page of your packet.
Looks like it was already in.
You can see Reserve A, doesn't show it on the plaque because it's black and white, but Reserve A is a lake.
All right. Oh, there it is, okay. And how many, I don't count, how many houses are going in?
Forty-seven.
How many?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Wow. The developer is. Everything's cool now? Negotiating with? Okay. Okay, all right.
Part of that being when we do eventually develop that intersection there.
Right, that was the roundabout, yeah.
They work with them on that. And if he makes some improvements, that's.
Any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor? I would move to approve the contract with bottom company PA not to exceed the amount of $306,400 and authorize the mayor to sign.
That $3,464,000.
I'm sorry, I'm visually impaired here tonight without my glasses. Yeah, $306,400, big difference.
$3,464,000.
That's not what my sheet says. Line F?
Yeah.
Uh, G.
No, I'm down too far. Okay. Told you I was visually handicapped. $3,464,000 even.
And number two.
And number two, adopt the resolutions of advisability for Addis Woods addition and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second to accept the petitions for Addis Woods addition paving water, sanitary sewer and stormwater drain improvements in the total amount of $3,464,000. And number two, to adopt the resolutions of advisability for Addis Woods addition and authorize the mayor to sign. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Talk about specials, it's.
So I got, it looks like I got these agenda items in the right order tonight. So we're going to turn right back around now. Yes, and ask you guys to approve the Baughman contract engineering for Addis Woods. This too will be paid out of the 2025 Project Fund. City attorneys reviewed and approved the contract as a form, and I'm requesting that you approve it not to exceed the amount of $306,400 and authorize the mayor to sign.
entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'll try it again. I move to approve the contract with bottom company PA not to exceed the amount of $306,400 and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
And a motion and second to approve the contract with Baughman Company PA not to exceed the amount of $306,400 and authorize the mayor to sign. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Item H is an amendment for City Health Code. Tom, you want to talk to this or?
Members, this is an amendment to the City Health Code, and it involves clarifying the responsibility of homeowners associations in areas that they're responsible for. Under the code, most of the time under plats, a homeowners association owns the reserves and owns the common areas. So the ordinance is now written would apply to homeowners associations who are owners of the property they're responsible for maintaining within a platted area. However, there are some plats that the homeowners association are responsible for maintaining land within the platted area that they don't own. And that kind of gives them an out under our ordinance because it applies to owners and lesses and tenants and that sort of thing. And they're none of those things. So what this ordinance does is it amends the health code, and this ordinance abates nuisances. So it's talking about abatement of weeds, abatement of, oh, all the different things that we abate that are nuisances. And, and. So what this, what this does is it makes, it makes a homeowners association that's responsible for land that they don't own, responsible for maintaining that land. So in the case, let's say they have an area they're responsible for, and there's weeds in that area that fit our definition of weeds, then we can charge them criminally in municipal court for not maintaining that, and we can also abate the nuisance and charge it back to them where it's, we can't currently now, and there's nobody responsible for taking care of it because the homeowner's not responsible. And how it's determined that they're responsible is in the Declaration of Covenants that platted areas usually have. So that's what this ordinance does. It does one other thing, it amends the definition of weeds. The definition doesn't, doesn't include voluntary trees, and a lot of times when you get weeds, you get voluntary trees. It also adds the concept that anything that interferes with the use of that property, say it's for a drainage way, that it's a plant that interferes with, with the usage of that area as a drainage way, that those are also called weeds that can be abated and the party responsible can be ordered to remove them, such as the homeowners association.
I personally am glad to see this come up because living in a development that has a homeowners association that likes to send you notices every time they think your yard needs to be mowed, yet they won't take care of the horrible situations that some of the neighborhood is in, you know, just with, with not taking care of those, you know, over drainage and, and stuff like that and the weeds and stuff. I think it's time to hold them accountable and make them toe the load, just like they make the residents and the homeowners associations do. Because they definitely.
That's the purpose.
Yeah.
When I asked Tom to look into this, we discovered kind of a loophole that had, this has been going on for maybe decades for quite some time. And I'm glad that we're finally addressing this as a city. Yeah, we'll just leave it at that. You don't have homeowners association. I'm just now starting to deal with them. I know exactly what you guys are going through finally.
Yes, yes.
I won't get into my personal struggles already. I haven't even been in my house for a week. Anyway, that's, this is, this is a slide that's been with us for quite some time, and I'm glad that Tom and the staff have come up with something to fix this. Anything else?
No.
I would move to pass the ordinance that is attached to the agenda item and authorize the mayor to sign. And that would be amendment eight dash 201, eight dash 301, and eight dash 402.
Just pass the ordinance, you know, because the ordinance.
Okay.
Addresses all three of those sections. The ordinance amends those sections that you just cited. So passing the ordinance amends those sections.
I have a motion and a second to pass the ordinance that is attached to the agenda item and authorize the mayor to sign. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, Park and Tree Board Appointment, Unexpired Two-Year Term. We've got, what do we have, two? No, one. Okay. Hey, Nick.
She would fill the unexpired term of Brianna Goodwin-Legree, whose term originally expired in May of 2026. Any other questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Can you tell us about it other than she's a teacher? Anything?
She's a resident, I have not met her.
Normally, we get a bio or something.
She is a, I mentioned the teacher, she's a resident of Mays since 2023 and has a one-year-old daughter who also enjoys parks. And I believe she has an undergraduate degree in plant genetics from Purdue University.
Sounds appropriate.
She's got some interest in all things parks and trees.
Exactly what we're looking for.
So I would recommend her appointment. The Park and Tree Board has recommended her appointment, again, to fill the unexpired term till May of 2026, and she's expressed interest in renewing that term in May.
That's something that I do or we do as a board or as a city council? I can't remember. Is it just something I do?
Well, you nominate him, and then the board approves your nomination.
I would nominate, how should I pronounce her name?
Madeline.
Madeline McFall. To fill the term of Brianna Goodwin that expires in May of 2026. I would nominate her.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 She is effectively in right now. Great. Going to finish up here. We're going to start with some reports. Please.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The only thing that I would add to my report before I take any questions is we had a very successful first 911 camp last week, and second camp starts tomorrow. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that the weather doesn't get too bad for the campers. I'll stand for any questions you may have.
When does your second command start?
June 30th.
June 30th. And you're full up on officers right now?
Yes, we have two young officers. One just started a little over a week ago.
Yep.
They'll both be going to the State Academy on June 23rd to start their 14-week academy, and that fills all of our positions.
How many full-time and part-timers do we have?
Right now, we only have one part-timer that's been helping cover some shifts. Now that we're full up, top to bottom, I believe we're authorized 21 positions.
That includes the SRO officers that you employ during the summertime?
Correct.
Right.
And after 911 camp, they will be working an alternate schedule, modified first, modified second, to help cover patrol and to allow for others to take vacations.
I just noticed that the year-to-date comparison, the total crash report kind of increased from 26 to 41. Are there any particular street that increased that crash? Or, I mean, what happened? Just wondering. Do you have any clue why we have? Yeah, because this is year-to-date comparison.
We had several more accidents during the school year, particularly at 45th and 119th and over on 119th Street. The accidents at 45th and Tyler have gone down since the four-way stop was put in. So we've seen some success there. But nothing particularly identifiable that we need to address by changing speed limits or anything like that at this time.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is there anything we can do to try to see, you know, bring that number down? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Public Works. Best dressed man in this, in the whole room.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Couple of items I'll update you on. We did complete the preservation of the City Hall parking lot, and we also completed the application of reclamation to most streets due to some of the rain that we received over the past couple of weeks. There was one issue in particular on Haley Court located at the southwest corner of 45th and Tyler Road that will be completed at a later date. There was some standing water in there that we're working with an engineer to resolve. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer.
Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Just want to tie into the discussion on drainage. The public, Nick Vestry and Public Works Director and myself went out, and we looked at areas that we knew were problem areas. And we're, I know that Nick is working on a list of, comprehensive list of areas that need to be priority, areas that we focus on when and if there's potentially any funds available for us to focus on drainage, stormwater in certain areas. So we've, we started that list, and that's going to be something we continue to update. Especially, you know, in areas where we got, we knew that we had potential water invasements and things of that nature. What are the things we could do to address those? And as we, one of the things you heard about in our strategic plan is we look at a stormwater utility. Those will be the areas we'll probably focus on great, for the most part there. In reality, most areas that are developed nowadays have addressed all of the drainage, but if you look at some of the older parts of Mays and some of the areas where they didn't have some of those requirements, or, and you look at some of the roadways where you have very flat inches that have hard time moving water, those are all areas that we'll probably look to focus on and that we can address into the future.
Is Haley Court, is that where the duplexes are? And I noticed coming down the hill, it was full of water. Is that even our street or?
It is our street.
I don't know. I had in the back of my mind, it wasn't our street, but I guess it is.
It is our street, and we're working with the, the original design engineer to to try to identify exactly what's going on with with the original design and why it's not working as intended. So that was actually one that during the first large rainfall event, we, Public Works took out a pump to alleviate some of the standing water in the street for the smaller vehicles passing. That was about a day and a half of pumping. There was a couple of areas that we felt needed to be prioritized just to allow normal traffic flow and people to access their, their residences.
Anything else, guys?
Nope.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Lanning. Mitch, how you doing?
Good, sir. Mayor, council members. Don't really have anything to add to my report, other than I'd like to thank Public Works for their work on my street this last couple of weeks where they pumped it. So I was very appreciative of that. So my vehicle didn't flood out, and then I don't have anything to add to my report, and I'll stand for questions.
Questions, guys? Thank you for all that you're doing. Keeps going, don't it? Tom Legal. Thank you, Tom. Operations.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. All right, so, Tess, your packets, you have your year-to-date treasury reports and your cash and budget position reports. Some financial updates that I wanted to tell you guys. We've completed our look for, completed our application with Commerce Banks for our purchasing cards. And I'm also working on a purchasing card policy, so when those come in, we can hand those policies out with the individuals that are getting those purchasing cards. Began development on our 2026 budget forms. And we have recently collaborated with USD 266 on revising the SRO contract. That's come to an end. And the next item I want to talk to you about is AP automation. I'm just kind of looking for your guys' thoughts on this. What is AP automation? AP automation is a financial tool that will be, that could be added on to our Tyler Technologies. What it will do is you create a workflow online into our system. So are you guys familiar with workflows before? Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure before I went into complete detail here. So basically, what a workflow is, is what would happen is invoice would come in. A bill would get automatically uploaded into our current financial system. What would happen from there is our AP clerk would take that and say, this belongs to Public Works. So that would start our workflow system. From there, it would get sent out to the appropriate party. It's, let's say that it went to their admin assistant. Once the admin assistant coded it with a dropdown menu to show you, hey, this is where this account should be. Commodities, professional services, contractors. She could choose what she wants there. Currently, our employees really don't, they have to go and research exactly what those account codes are. So this would really save our employees a lot of time to choose that. So the initial person would choose the funding, and they would press okay. Now, if that line is over budget, it would push back at them and say, hey, this is over budget. This is not approved. Basically, contact somebody, see why it's over budget. If it's not over budget, it's going to get approved. Now, it's going to go on to our Public Works Director. Public Works Director is going to look at it, put a stamp of approval on it, and it's going to come to me. I'm going to check it out. It's going to, I'm going to put my stamp of approval on it. Then it will go to the quarterly person that does the check registry currently. And this would be a system that you guys can look online at any time. So it's just kind of a constant rule of events. So you would get an email that said, hey, you have something out here that you need to approve. You guys approve it, then it would go on to Mayor, and Mayor would approve it. Mayor would be on it because instead of having to sign the checks every time, that approval would take over signing those checks. My approval would take over signing those checks. AP automation would then print the checks for us, pay for the print, pay for the ink, pay for the stamp, pay for the envelope. Now, what this also does, it would also give you guys a view on ACHs. Because right now, any kind of electronic payment we do, you guys don't see. So now, you guys would see the quarterly, and Mayor would see it as well. And now, on top of that, what it also does is we're allowed to send vendor portals out to vendors, and they can fill out how they want to get paid, all their banking information, their address, all those things. These are things we currently have to send W9s for them. So we'd be able to do that. So they'd be able to choose. There's even the option for them to choose to get paid quicker if they want to pay a fee for it. But again, it would have to go through our workflow to get to that process. So basically, what it's doing is making the process we're already doing more efficient. For you guys that don't know, what the process is that we already do is we get an invoice in the mail. Somebody has to scan it in, and once it's scanned in, it's converted to PDF. The PDF is sent out for signature to one person. Then it's sent over from your me for approval. Then that approval is sent back to our AP clerk, or AP clerk then looks at it, prints out the check registry, sends it to a council member at the end of the week, and then that next week, Mayor reviews it and signs it. And so this would also make our process so much more efficient. I mean, we could turn around things in days rather than weeks. We're just sending out checks once a week at this point. This would make, help us avoid any late fees. And I really believe this would also allow us to create more ACHs, which would mean less fraud. That's really. The cost of this annually is about $4,426. $4,426. Now, if you think about how much it costs to write a check, the average amount to write a check with the person's work is $7. So it basically pays for itself in that sense.
Less of the time that everybody spends in reviewing and moving paper.
I also would like to add, I think just being able to view it on the cloud is going to be really beneficial to our staff because going, coming into this next financial year, that's where we're moving anyways. So it's going to be a nice little introduction to our financial cloud system for individuals that are going to be working into it as well. I will say this has a 12-week turnaround time, so it's still going to be 12 weeks until we could get Tyler Tech out here, really, to train us to implement it. It will take some work upfront, as I would have to create all those workflows. And all those workflows can be edited at any time, but right now, we don't really have a straight system. We kind of have a communication where we tell people, hey, this is where it needs to go, but this is really going to set, like, this is exactly where it needs to go. There's no question. This is where it's going to go. And then obviously, we're going to have processes. If somebody leaves, how to, who needs to be in there and who to replace them. I will like to say that we are deciding how we want to do the quarterly check registry right now. We could do it as everybody always gets a notification for, like, every council member would get a notification for everything, and then just the quarterly report person would pick it up. So that way, if the quarterly report person's on vacation, somebody else could pick it up for them. Or we can make it so just that person that's doing it quarterly can get them. And then we can always know who it's stuck on, who we're waiting for to get the job done. It's just, I really think that it would make our process more efficient, so we can focus on other things, especially with our strategic plan coming into play and us wanting to, you know, do a lot of new things as well. So I will stand for any questions on that item.
So is it standalone?
What do you mean standalone?
Is it a module for an interesting?
Yep, it's a module that Tyler Technologies already has.
That's what I assumed, but.
Yeah.
We just.
Another city that uses it is Andover. We have another city around us that uses it as well.
Are there any negatives to it at all?
I haven't heard any negatives. I think that, to be transparent, I think it's been hard for people to transition to it because it's a new tool. It's a new tool, and people fear with new technologies that transparency isn't going to be as well as it is the other way, but truly, this is going to give you guys more transparency. And it's going to allow us to really see where we're going over budget and stopping things and seeing why we're doing that towards the end of the year, on my aspect.
Starting to flip because it's almost archaic to have everything on paper anymore. I mean, we've got to get.
I sure, I hate signing checks for $5.96.
At the time.
And I'm really hoping that this vendor portal too will allow us to get more people into ACH, because I, a lot of the issues we're having now is the time that it takes to get people to fill out those forms, to get the information we need for those ACHs. And just the training to get people on how to fill, how our internal staff, the training to get them to do it, and then as well to have people, external staff figuring out and doing it the correct way. And so, I mean, personally, if I was to get an email that said, hey, fill this out, how you want to get paid, and you knew it was legit, I'm going to go fill it out because I want to get paid as a company. So, and especially if they're going to pay me faster.
Any discussion about a payroll module?
I believe that we, there has been some discussion on it. On that note, I do want to mention that Sarah is doing a great job with all this. She really has done a lot of research into all of these things and these technologies, and I think kind of with new staff, we're really trying to start implementing more and more of these things to make more efficient processes. So yes, I do believe that that is on the horizon. But maybe if I'm wrong, Tristan could step out here and tell me. Thank you.
Okay.
You guys don't have any further questions? Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick? Or whoever? Who's next?
I did want to just highlight some of the things in my monthly June operations report. First of all, I wanted to kind of report that we've heard, finally heard back from the Arch Church, and they do want to go with a public-private partnership to develop the sewer, a public sewer along that edge, which really gives us a major advantage as we look to grow, potentially grow commercial there along 96. And so we'll be working up some petitions for us to work with them. They have made several inquiries about our possibility of waiving some of our tapping equity fees and looking at our building permit fees that we might consider. So I may be following up with you on an email on what they've proposed going forward into that. And so we'll, we'll look at that as an option, but I want to have feedback from you as well. So I'll be reaching out to you on that. Couple of things from an economic development standpoint. We attended the Regional Economic Development Roundtable that we have once a quarter. Also, we met with Lang Real Estate to discuss long-term development strategies for Mays. That's a regular thing we do, is try to meet with different development folks to make sure that they were, they realize that Mays is open for business. You know, as you looked at our strategy, strategic plan, it's bringing businesses into Mays. So continuing to have those conversations with retailers. Along that same note, visited with a local broker regarding new development partnerships. Also met with retail attractions to provide site and ownership information for retailer preparing for a letter of intent to purchase a property. So those are exciting things that at some point we hope we can report to you, but, but a lot of discussions happening in the economic development front. Couple of other things I'll highlight. One thing she didn't, one thing that Elizabeth didn't mention is we are looking to make a change to the city-issued purchasing cards that we have. We had some issues with the timeframe that some of those things take. So we're actually working, we met with a number of different companies, and we're, we've decided, we determined we're going to select Commerce Bank to work with for our purchasing cards. We looked at all the options that you as a council gave us as well as a number of others that other cities are using. We think it'll tie in well with the automation process that's out there that Elizabeth just talked to you about. So we'll continue to work with that. We've collaborated with USD 266, some revisions to the School Resource Officer Agreement. You'll see that coming up here. Upcoming, probably later in the month, I assume. Is that right? We welcome two new seasonal workers at, at Public Works, two full-time. Workers did resign in May, but we've already got some good discussions with some potential leads on that. Chief didn't mention it, but we've extended and accept, again, accepted offer for Deputy Police Chief Doug Nolte. Will start on June 30th. So we're excited to have him aboard. Wanted to report to you, we had our first Summer Concert Series event. We had the band. I know there were several of you guys that were there, and they played some good 80s hard rock covers, and I think it was really well-attended. We had perfect weather, so we're hoping we can catch that lightning in a bottle as we look at the next two. Next one will be June 27th. It'll be a band called Big Fat Fun that have a, have a really good following. And then on July 18th, Kyle Kilgore. So we'll continue to pursue those. I know Tristan's put a lot of work into both, both that, the farmer's market, which we've had now our first two farmer's markets. Good attendance, good weather. I think the vendors have been excited and very happy. And we'll continue with that. The other thing, the new event is the July 3rd event that we're going to, we're working jointly with the Rec Commission on. You can kind of see a list of things that they're planning on doing there. Wheels Parade, it's decorated bikes, scooters, et cetera. There'll be a bike safety booth with the Mays PD, DJ Carbon pre-show, music, and interactive activities with, they're going to look at doing like trivia and singo, if you've ever seen that, but it's like bingo with songs. So there's just some different events. And then obviously, the culmination will be the fireworks at 9:30. Awesome opportunity to come out on July 3rd and see fireworks. And then if you, if you're interested and your family does that, you can go shoot, shoot your own fireworks on the force. So we think choosing that date is pretty valuable. June 3rd, public meeting for the sales tax. We ended up canceling because of all the rain we got. But we did reschedule it. We do plan to have that on July 1st from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and that'll be at Impact. Later this week, we'll have one of those sales tax meetings here over the lunch hour. It's June 18th. I think that's Thursday. Is that right? Wednesday, sorry, Wednesday, 11:30 at City Hall. It'll be here in this room. We will have, provide, we will have some light lunch for anybody that was interested in attending. So we'll have that. As I mentioned, the July 1st, and then the July 8th will be the other piece. We also have, on July 10th, have a presentation at Arch Community Chamber Luncheon. It'll be hosted by Gilmore and Bell. They've agreed to help pay for that, but that'll be a chamber meeting. Any business in Mays or in will be, will be invited to attend. You don't have to be a chamber member, but we, we do want to talk to our businesses and make sure they're aware. And we do have yard, yard signs that have arrived. So if you have interest in those, or you have a citizen or neighbor that's interested in putting up a yard sign, we have a limited amount. We didn't order a lot. We do have some that are promoting the sales tax. And so that's where we're at on that piece. I know since I did this report for 2025, the total amount of building permits is, I think I remember seeing, we're at 52 single-family and I think 38 duplexes. So we did have quite a few building permits come in. We're, we're on a similar pace to what we were last year, and we'll continue to pursue that. I think that's the main things that I wanted to hit on. I stand for any questions if anybody has any that I didn't talk about.
With that, we'll go to council member, members' reports. If any, Doctor, you want to start us off? You got anything? You're good?
I'm good, too. I don't think I have anything. Major?
Kevin?
I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work. The concert was great. Glad to see it. Glad to see it keep up the positive momentum there. Hopefully that'll just keep building and the, you know, the more people attend, more people hear about it the next time. So I think it'll keep going that way, or at least I hope so.
And I'll also point out that we actually started putting some signs up too. So hopefully you'll see around the community, we've put up signs announcing those. So folks, more people become aware of that. We've put up signs that, I know we've put up at a, we've got some landowners that have undeveloped properties that we've tried to put up, several of the signs that advertise the farmer art market, the concert series, and also the 3rd of July event that's coming up. So we're, we're trying everything we can to get the word out.
Yeah, I think that 3rd of July is a great day to do it too. That was a good idea to do that. I think it'll be well-attended as well.
I know I'm going to be there. Alex, you got anything?
No, sir. I, all's good on my end, thank you.
Are you in Washington DC?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. I'm not going to say anything. Never mind. I'm going to shut up. The only, I, I wanted to say in my closing statement, I agree, Kevin and I sat together at that concert, we really enjoyed it and we had a good time and we hope it will build. Big Fat Fun, I understand is pretty good, so we're looking for, I'm going to be at that one too, I hope. And thank you Tristan. This is what I, we envisioned, I guess, when we put this darn thing together, this amphitheater. And it didn't start off fast, but thank you for all your efforts because this is what I envisioned this thing to be like. So it's a great thing. And with that, I think we're going to do the motion for the executive at this point.
Yep. I would move that the governing body go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter concerning the resignation of a non-elected employee pursuant to statutory justification listed as KSA 75-43191. The meeting, the open meeting will resume in this room at 45 after, 7:45?
Is that good? Okay, we ready? We are back. Executive session's over.